Six o'clock. Open the board of select meeting for Tuesday, May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Our agenda this evening, we have public forum. Followed by appointments, we have two fairly lengthy lifts lists of appointments. New business, one of which we're going to take out of order, which will be the reorganization of the board. Then followed by discussion of the next steps of the school debt question defeat with members of the school committee. Appointment of a consultant or interim town clerk. Authorized submission of bylaws adopted by the two thousand twenty-two annual town meeting in accordance with master law forty, section thirty-two, the wetlands bylaw. An update on the capital land industrial landfill proposal. Discussion on the state earmark. Vote on the formation of teams for negotiating with the police union. Approval of amendments to the liquor license legislation, treasurer collector retirement letter. And the planning and conservation administrator retirement letter. One set of minutes from May tenth. So just before we start, is anyone in the public tonight that would like to speak? Except for Mike. That is not on the agenda. Sorry, Mike, if you can.
The money you guys earmarked.
For which?
For the water, like, we have over six hundred thousand, you said. Was earmarked for the water, like, I just want to know.
Six hundred?
Would it, okay, where'd you get that number from?
The meeting that you guys met.
Oh, the ARPA money.
And you guys said, oh, no, no.
Oh.
Then we gave some to the school. And we said, we have a little over six hundred thousand.
It was the, it was the.
Two thirds of the ARPA.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's, I gotta know it's there because the fight, you know, we get out of the fight now because it's out. It's not.
I don't know if the money is.
That's readily available, so I gotta know. The list will probably be in tomorrow or the day after. On material and. I gotta know that we have the money to buy this material.
I think we should have some.
I have to talk to Bonnie about that.
We'd have to, I know some money was here to to pay some of the.
Yeah.
Employees.
Thirty thousand dollars at this point.
Okay.
But I just want to know that it's there because why are we wasting our time?
So there's two, there's two pieces to your, all right. The money's been allocated, whether it's not, whether it's in the bank or not.
Is, yeah.
Is, is.
You also have consultants.
So. Speak with him, speak with Dave, or, you know, he'll talk to Bonnie. And we'll be sure that we've received cash from an appropriation standpoint, you all said.
All right, somebody, it is an agreement that there is a little over six hundred dollars.
We're not in this agreement.
Yeah, I don't know the exact dollar amount, but.
Okay.
Money was said so.
Five ninety-seven, maybe.
I want to run through all this and find out, you know, it's not there.
We haven't changed anything. And whether or not the dollars are in the bank, this needs to be verified.
Well, that was supposed to come from the state, right? Or dollars, or was that the government?
No, it was the feds, I think. Recovery.
Yeah, recovery, yeah.
I think you're good to order it. I think you're okay to order it.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for the public forum? Chief?
I just want to add, if you ask us that, that our officer that we moved last year's comments out of work inside the cavity. Place off schedule.
So you've got your nine, nine officers, finally. Okay, good, I hope you all stay healthy and local. Fingers crossed. Okay, great, that's good to know, thanks, chief. Anything else? There being none, we will. Go for the appointments, so we have two lists here, one is for. You want to do that first?
Yeah, I think we're.
Do that first.
We need to.
Okay, sorry.
Put our wood in place for coming year. I know we talked about moving the chairs all around last year.
Yeah.
So then unless you have some objection to it. We'll move the chair's position to you.
Yeah, reflection coming up, right, sir, to get back to that cycle.
Back to that cycle, too.
And Leah will be member, I'll move it to second spot. Some motion.
So move.
Second.
Those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
When do you start that? I'll let you remain in your chair.
We can switch. They've got wheels.
I heed respect. I think you may have taken a lot of my sheets paper.
Give me whatever you need.
Are we still discussing?
No, he was just asking about.
So I guess we can shift to new business, correct?
Yep.
Appointments.
Appointments. You're gonna help out a lot. So we have two lists before us. Do you want to go through them name by name or? Any questions before we make a motion?
I don't know. But I have, I have one list here that. The appointment staff, midi committees, boards, commissions. And this list is dated May twenty-fourth. Twenty-two. And so I'm going to move that we accept these appointments as provided in this memo. Of appointments. And that's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Is the second list the police list?
Yes. The whole part.
So we have a, among a motion that we accept the appointments. As provided by Chief Dow for the police department. And this memo appointment memo is dated May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. So I motion that we accept all these members as provided by chief.
This includes the new officer? Second, anyway, so.
Questions?
Who is the newest officer that just came on? What, okay, so he is on, okay, okay.
My only question is. Chief Dow, when's your contract? Is it this June, this June is your contract? Next year? Okay. All right, so I just want to make sure we're following in line with the way that paperwork is written out, so.
That's a good point. If he has an employment agreement, we're appointing him. Is it what are you concerned about timing between the agreement and the appointment list?
Yeah, I mean, there's some gray area there, I want to make sure we're following proper protocol, we would forever, for everyone. I don't know how it's been done in years past because I don't think, I wasn't here when the contract was written.
His appointment ends before his contract does, so if we need it, we could always appoint for another two months.
I think it's the opposite, doesn't his contract expire in July?
July twenty-three. So this would run through the same period. Yeah.
Okay, cool, that's fine, then we're good.
No, I think the contract is.
I would think so, too.
Good to know, all right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Right.
Hi. Back to order, so we did our. Reorganization. We want to shift to the school discussion of next steps on school debt question. With the members of the Grand Council Regional School Committee. I can open it up for questions, dots and feedback. What would you guys like us to do?
So if you look on the, on the second page, there's potential options here, so I will be like. From there and then all the way back to all of those, yes, to the capital plan. Those are my assumptions of the things that.
Page two or page three?
Well. I guess it's, we did this back on March thirty-first as a group, right? And we went through the bare necessities, which is what we earmarked free cash for. Because I asked the question at the event that the town meeting didn't approve.
I think that email that you sent us at the house was something a little bit different than the March.
Yeah. Well, that was the one I was sitting next to Lacy right there, where I highlighted and circled the student chrome work lease, teacher device lease. Those were the things you like, we have to have.
Yeah, it's not that those are the bare minimums, it's just that those are the ones that have to be first, because those are contractual obligations. So I think maybe there was a misunderstanding of some of. What that, what those numbers represent, it wasn't that like, okay, we can make do with this and we find a way to run it, it's just that whatever money we get, it first has to fund those things.
Sure, but I asked that night, what happens if it, if it fails? And it was, well, we have to pay these and we made enough money set aside and free cash to cover that. And then the other resulting factors were. It is what it is, like, because there's always a risk that it wasn't going to pass, right?
Right. And then we would have no option but then to love to take the money from operational something, because they are contractual, they will be contractual required. So unlike other items in the capital plan. Other items in the capital plan, you could say, these are all safety items. You know, for example, the sidewalk is crumbling, blah, blah. We could say, if there was, either time appropriating in the capital plans. We could make a decision, which is huge safety for us, but we could make a decision, that's it, and we're not going to do it. But the cap, the contracts for the chromos.
Right.
We cannot make that decision.
Yeah.
We could have to take that money from operational money, or just operational lines and.
Right, that was the question, go ahead, sorry.
So you have that covered in the sixty-four that we allocated in our budget?
I agree, but I just wanted to make a clarification, is those items are different in the sense that we have a legal requirement to do that, whether appropriated the money or not.
Understood, yeah, okay. Okay.
Guys?
So, using my perspective, I was just. The, the school committee reviewed our capital budget back in February, and there was a certain I have a statement I had to defer to the. Up here challenges for several years, and we had these items, we're all, these are all essential to saving health. We didn't do many of these, that's flawed option. And, you know, we have an obligation to the criticism of the task, and we're not able to do it at schools. If we don't demonstrate, and share the belief that we're at this point, that if we don't demonstrate that we're performing out of the limits on these buildings. It's going to put the N S B E request for the roof reimbursement or swallowing unit in general. So not only are we not maintaining, taking care of essential items, but potentially costing the workers a once in a while. So for my perspective, this should go back before the board. You guys had two hundred people turn out of the hall, this is eight percent of the population. I don't think that speaks to everyone, it wasn't all publicized. I spoke to one former school committee member, and he wasn't even aware of the question for, you know, to an act of judgment conclusion on the power. So I don't think the word is out there adequately, there's an opportunity to put back to the vendors and ask the motion. That's my perspective, I will leave that.
The other thing I'm asking about the N S B A is that the. History, well, first of all, I should say that when, if it were to be made sure of this for the roofs. The first thing we're going to do to come in, and that's exactly what happens in every building project I've done with them. To ask them whether the town is prepared to pay their portion of what we're asking for, and also to go with track record of the town regarding capital, capital expenditures. So if this was, if we were to just stick to the sixty-four thousand, we were not to do any of the other capital projects. Then I would have to share that with them, and I would have to say with the town, if the only thing that I had, if my experience was this last election. Sorry, last voting, then I would have to share that with them, so that's the detrimental subject. The rotten side is that when we go to get our final reimbursement rates for Florence Road. They're going to look at what the capital and maintenance have not tracked, because the list has been. And if we have not kept up our capital and maintenance, it's going to have an impact of a percentage of millions of dollars. So while I understand roof, we need to understand that that's not a common limitation, and. So right now, the new school is around seventy-seven million dollars, if I can remember off the top of my head. That, that could be multiple percentage points decrease in terms of the building to get reimbursement to go from brown. For that building, if we cannot show that we have had that maintenance and capital expenditure district over the town this project. So I guess those are just some of the things that I mentioned.
So that was by me.
Go for it.
When you're speaking of the roof, that's the roof recoding for the, for total of fifty, no?
No, no, that repair is leaving on this year, that is a project that we applied for, and that year. It's called a celebrated. So that, that doesn't have any funding on it, that hasn't been. It's pretty.
No, no, no.
No, it's all the same. It's not a replacement, not just.
If you were to triage these things in the remaining unfunded items, I mean, what would they be?
Is it in like an order, like priority order?
Yes. No, sorry, I guess through cameras. We have. Um, we worked it out. Yeah, that's about. Oh, so. I would say security cameras. There's that splits here for swallowing unit. Your one could be that we're trying with some of the classroom to improve the air quality. The A P H A control system, that is a phase two, meaning that we already started the programming of it. This would be the implementation phase of that control system. The. The poles for the stadium field, the goalpost was actually that before we even went out for the, we're replacing that by summer. So we need regulation. Of course, so that, uh, the other things, that's it. There is a safety issue with that response, it's, it's unsafe right now, it's. But if I had to triage, in the property law, actually. For example, you've got some symbols that you. So we were really hoping to get that done.
Sure. Dave, what are typical? Reactions to this from your town administrator? At thinking of this? You see towns revoke this, do you see towns take no action?
Every community I've been in, which has had a debt school, which is not. Capital, well, not since the capital doesn't see the debt school, it generally does.
Okay.
I can't really speak in this, but going out again to do the question. And if the question is going to go out again, a decision has to be made by the board of selection before September fifteenth to hold an election. It would be preferable if you were going to do that, that you coordinate that with the November election.
Okay.
So we don't have to run special election in the middle of summer, how we get lower than our budget.
However, this money is supposed to be for fiscal year starting July one, though, right? So how would the funding?
I, I don't know if you got a copy of the sheet here, but it does go through the different tendencies, it feeds to the fact, especially maybe setting up other elections that most approve by. September fifteenth for appropriations made at the annual meeting, which is what we do, the appropriate. At the annual town meeting. So we would then be subject to making a declaration of the old election prior to September fifteenth, as it was. And then it goes at such a time, you know, nine days.
Okay.
But, you know, the option is with the board to say, you know, if we're going to have it as an election question on another ballot. We want to have it under the November election. We'd have to make that declaration before September fifteenth.
Okay. Now, we also set aside hundred thirty-five K in ARPA money this year, hundred thirty-five K next year.
Yeah.
Can we just do all of it this year?
I, I'm gonna, honestly, I'm, I'm just getting up to speed with the whole ARPA thing.
Okay.
It wasn't, ARPA wasn't. In fact, when I left that.
And it changed in two thousand.
Yeah, the regs.
It was confusing along the way, the rules, how it could be used, changed.
Yeah.
We do have a consultant that I can work with to figure out, you know, how that's going to impact in the future. Regarding how the funds are expended throughout the fire.
Okay. Question.
So, I mean, we'll see where you guys go with this year call. One other thing, based on, you know, what Dr. Kessinger said. And that, that consideration, as one senior committee member, I can't hit on. Or strongly urge you guys to go back to the public and have a little look in color again. And I know in the past, we talked super town, I don't want to drop it, I don't want to, it's the license, it's the culture of the school district, it's the prostitute knowledge. But I'm prepared to bring them to the school if you guys want to put this back before the board. I don't want to, so I urge you.
So there's a couple of things, all right? You may not know this, but I sat on the original capital committee for Grand Festival. I went through every school building, I went through mechanical rooms, the basements, the roof. The front facing of the building, the bathrooms, the classrooms, the black box, I went, we spent weeks, I think we went through that. And I'm extremely proficient with it. And I understand it. And, and, and the appeal for funds to support the capital asset is justified. It's, 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 it's just, it's there, I, I get to see it. My two colleagues didn't, they weren't on the board at that time, but I went through it all and I saw it, so. Believe me, we get it, all, all of us were disappointed in that result. Quite frankly, I fell off my chair when I read it, I thought it was wrong, because I thought it was dyslexic. But. Someone said to us, we didn't campaign, we can't campaign, we're restricted from doing that, we can't campaign pro or con, because we're restricted, can't, can't do that. Alls we can do is put the information out there, and if people ask us questions, answer those questions. We can't go on social media and say, go out and vote for this thing. You, you can only advocate, as an elected official, you can only advocate that as putting the information out there, hopefully people will vote.
The school committee can do the same thing.
Got it.
So it's not, it's not, you're not trying to do a measuring contest here, like, that's not helpful.
Right, no, but how many, how many information that, how many emails without the tribal importance of that?
Have you checked, I'll throw, I have to throw Lacy and Raff in the bus here, but did you check with them?
For my part, not to say that I'm the only person that should have been getting information out, but I accept that, I acknowledge that, that is after. That being said. I think that we can all agree across the board, there wasn't a lot of outreach to the community about what was happening, but the fact that there was a bunch of. Because I talked to a lot of people that didn't know, if you didn't happen to drive from town, whatever, you missed the sign.
Mailers were sent out to every single household.
Okay.
That there was town meeting with an election, the ballot election on there.
Truthful.
Every, it's been in neighbor to neighbor, it's been on the town website, it's been on Nextdoor, it's been on the Facebook page that we have a town election, we have a town annual meeting. This isn't a surprise to people, we have a town meeting every single year in May. So, you know, I personally don't think it makes sense to putting blame on anybody right now, let's just try to figure out. Let's just figure out what we're going to do, I appreciate you, you know.
I'm sort of acknowledging the fact that, like, you know, the town as a whole, just, everybody was kind of like scratching their heads, you know what I mean? Like, some people maybe just were asleep at the wheel, you know, like, they just didn't check all of those things. Maybe some people forgot.
Most people just didn't vote, period. And that is typical when we have a small, small meeting, and there's only one question. And this is not the first time that it passed a town meeting and fails at the ballot, this is, this happens fairly frequently. So how, I, I mean, there, the wording of it can't be changed, it was written by legal counsel, it has to be worded in a certain way, so people were confused by it. I didn't find it particularly confusing, but nonetheless, I think there's, as Wall mentioned, we had eight percent, two hundred people showed up to vote, that's, that's horrible.
Wasn't ideal.
Yeah. It's horrible.
I, I will tell you, our thinking is along your lines, but it's two things, you don't, you, believe me, we understand the capital situation, we just do what we understand to go. And I wanted to share with you my own knowledge of it, and secondly, I, we haven't, as a board, voted to put this back out there, but I think it makes the right thing, it's the right thing to do. My only caution is, because I, I've been nineteen years doing this. We've won and lost, probably fifty to fifty. You know, these things become pocket issues for everybody, and we get to see some of that, but not just this one, but with others, you know, and seventy percent, I think it's the number, seventy percent of the town hospitals heated with. Oil and oil, six bucks a gallon, and two hundred gallons of oil cost me twelve hundred dollars all day. You know, people go to the ballot box and they go, oh, no, no, no more of that, no, no, they'll have to figure it out, no more of that. And so as much as we can advocate for it and put the information out there and, 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 and certainly communicate to, you know, everybody out there. You know, we're limited to some of that thinking, and, you know. It, it, it becomes a pocket of issue with a lot of people, but this particular case, in this particular issue. I, I would think that if, you know, we, we, we've learned the lesson here, and believe me, it's. Like I said, I thought the numbers were reversed, I'm going, she put the wrong numbers out there, and she didn't. And we fell off, I fell off my chair, and I think these two guys did too. We were very surprised by it, and were disappointed by it, and it's certainly not what we want for the district. We don't want this, and, and so I think our heart and our mind is in, is aligned up with where you guys are after this. Let's go take another bite at it, make sure that we get it out there and, and, and communicate to the extent that we do. And try to get back to the right result that makes it, that corrects the ship, because I, we're just, we're flawed by it, quite honestly, we really are.
So. So, now that we're doing it here, let me tell you, it's not going to do anything, so I think as a mound. I think we're just kind of wondering, and you kind of said it, all right, but is this something we're going to do and take a vote today? Because if not, then we need to do a better, you know, situation, figure it out, you know.
So, so.
I know we get the ninety day thing in September deadline and all that, but we also do.
So there are a couple of other things going on here, right? And because I, as I said, I've been doing this a long time, right? I have some concerns about the assessment, and the way the assessment comes back to the town typically Freda Ponte. Who's, right, and he wrote us an assessment letter and said, here's the numbers. And the board has to take and either accept or reject that assessment letter. Right now, based on the numbers that we've got. Our municipal budget is going to be out by a hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, right? We're out, we're out, we're out of bounds by a hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, can't do that, the state's not going to let you do that.
Well, we never did receive the assessment letter.
We didn't, but I think we got an email and. Yeah, so I don't, there's still some questions here on our mind as to how do we fix the assessment? Without throwing the school district into a thither over that, and I don't know that we have those answers.
Well, I, I guess the question is.
Yeah.
Talk accountable, or whatever, what, what does that letter bind us to, is that a binding contract?
You need to, that's why, you, you gotta, you know, Brian's got a way in on that.
Well, we did, we did call, we've messaged with Brian, fuck.
Yes.
Heard back.
We need to find that out and, and then work that angle now. The, the, the same thing is true with the district's budget, right? You guys vote on a specific budget, on specific numbers, and now you get money here that you're not getting, which, well, right now, it's not set up for you as to get this money. Hopefully, in a month or two, or whatever that is, September or November, whatever that next election pass was.
Be November.
This will get, this will get straight, no. How that gets solved from now, from then to now, I don't know. How that gets solved from now, from then to now, I don't know.
Just a question, you said that your assessment was on five hundred eighty eight thousand, but you appropriated sixty four thousand dollars at county meetings, so it's not off by a hundred eighty eight.
Hundred twenty something, yeah.
It's off, it's off by the difference between a hundred eighty and sixty four thousand, correct?
Yeah, it's still off by more money than that is, that is, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you're all the same.
You're doing the math the right way.
Yeah.
But when we passed, when we put this, Dr. R, when we put this through, the thinking was, at that meeting, and we and we spent some time talking about it, is, you know, the numbers are out there, right? We've picked our free cash clean to the point where I think after we fund this, we've got something like thirty five thousand dollars left in free cash.
Eighteen.
Is it eighteen? I, you can't run a town that way. And so the decision was made that we're gonna give Groton Vestable their one eighty eight, which will make them happy, and that sixty will stay in our free cash. We, the the boards decided not to pick that number clean to that extent. That was a decision-making criteria that was kind of socialized amongst the boards when they had a joint meeting. And so now we're already eighteen thousand for some other things to come in. You know, this, this is not a good, you know, D O R is gonna ring your doorbell and say, what are you guys doing?
So, I have a question, so, um, I spoke with our town manager, he said, we have to go back to town, um, in order to call a special, you can call a special election. I think there's a possibility of five, I think it's just a look at this, it's the town. You need a budget place, budget level, so if this board takes action, you can put this back, the board will, it's all on that.
Okay, hang on for a second, because.
We don't, number one, our town court requires that. So, that that's gonna be a task being done, so, uh, we we don't really have town courts. We were in the process of trying to fill that position, which has been a little on the tough side in terms of the the availability of town courts to, um, apply.
So let me answer, let me say this about that, all right? And I know Mark extremely well, and I value his information, but our town administrator needs to talk to Dustville's town council and vet that issue out, right? It's just, Mark's probably right, because I've known him since he took that job over. He's always given the right information, he's probably correct about that. But we're still trying to put some of these pieces together. And the only thing I can say is that, you know, we'll work together in an expeditious collective way to get the thing back on course without throwing everything off and causing a big, like me.
I was, I was saying that the town election couldn't be held, you know, before the annual of November election. I'm just saying that September fifteenth is outlined in the master and the laws that said, that if we're gonna move forward and put a back on as an election vote, then you have to make that decision prior to, you can make it this time, you can make it next month. The laws is before September fifteenth, that's the one the date it's gonna be called, because it did happen during the county. It was a special time, you have ninety days.
So we're also in a position where we still run the risk it fails.
So can I?
I like, I mean, we don't really have a solution, right? Like, we, this.
We need a backup plan, yeah.
Going back to the issue of, like, the advertising, right? I feel like last year, when there was the override question in respect to the police officer and fire truck. I believe the town administrator put together some really helpful information in terms of, like, it broke it down, five dollar amount, so that folks succeed. This is how much your taxes will increase, this is what it funds, this is what happens if it doesn't pass, right? I feel like collaboratively, we can maybe create some of that, um, get that information out to folks. So that if they can make really an informed decision, because, you know, if I didn't know what was going on and I just showed up at the ballot box and I'm looking and I see a hundred eighty eight thousand dollars, that seems like a big number. I don't want my taxes to go up by what I would assume would be a huge amount. But I think when you, when we do the math and we, when we bring it down, it's a much more manageable number. Now, people may still decide, I'm not gonna do that, and that was a real, that's, that's a real possibility. But the amount of people that I spoke to in the last few days, that have they been more informed about what that question is really asking and what that would really need for their own mind? Humanistically, I have talked to well over, probably seventy five people that have said, without question, this was like just parents at the school, you know, without really very much reaching out to people, that was something that they would have shown up and support. So I think that the, there is, there is a fair amount of hesitation, they, if they fully understood, I think that there may be a result, and there may not be. But I think that we should, probably.
Should have put a word to what happened last week, but now we know what we need to do in the future for this stuff. And if you guys decide to do it for the second ballot, we can run with that now, we can push it full force.
Again, not to advocate for it, just to.
Right, exactly. Then we, you can't follow up with you.
And I I wouldn't have a problem doing that, you know, that that's, you know, it's laws are not violating any laws. So we're spending a couple of funds to advocate for a certain position.
We don't want.
The form of the question is not going to change.
Yes, I understand.
The form of the question is specified, and so we all know that, so it's not gonna be any clearer in terms of specification. In the, in the articles for the town meeting, it referenced the, uh, that the fact that the the charge of how much money was gonna be spent was in the town's courts office. Anybody could have come in and said, hey. What's that?
And that's stuff, you know, we need to go on forward, and honestly, we don't want any issues with that to be at the committee, neither do you, we don't want to stay here at all, right?
They don't want to come up here.
I think it's a fair assumption to me too, though, that, you know, if you're not, like, living this stuff every day, you don't necessarily understand strategically how things work, right? So you go to town meeting, you approve the, the cap, the article eight, or whatever it was, like, putting the capital assessment on the ballot. Okay, done, you leave, all good, right? Then you show up a couple of days later. I think that there are some people that just don't fundamentally, like, understand the connection between what happened at town meeting and what shows up then a couple of days later, they don't necessarily always understand that. And that's, you know, that's, I think that's just a reality, you know, and so, um, I think that while they may have supported it at town meeting, they maybe didn't show up to vote or voted. But, you know, they they did show up and voted not to, so, um, I think those are the pieces of information that we get out and not violating, you know, the law.
I'm gonna let Raff speak and then Jeff, Joan, Carol.
The benefits of every, district, the town, every, so just keep that in mind, so, don't lose it here.
Yeah.
Unless we do not.
So, as I say, I think, I think we still, you guys, um, the capital, or you at least understand the importance of the capital. The, so, I think from your standpoint, it's what amount do you go back with and when? My understanding is that there is some urgency to this, and that's like, just to ensure, uh, you know, it's done now, but a lot of the projects that are on there are things that are slated for our summer, that's when the school buildings are actually going to be working on it. And without disruption, and so delaying until September fifteenth or, you know, into the fall, you know, puts, we, you know, spend money in this hill, we don't know, to be passed and approved to, which basically puts these projects in jeopardy. So having an earlier vote, you know, prior to the summer, you know, soon as possible, something that's advantageous, uh, to get into with them, which is the, it's already a quick influence from all the other things that we've been through, uh, took this and went it down to the ones that were really, the reliable, it was to be the best, uh, because we, you know, within tax, it's kind of what, the reliable, it's responsible, so. So I I just can ask you to, uh, you know, do your due diligence, ask the questions that we asked the council, you know, to, you know, to, to not kind of think that we can wait till September to make this town.
Last day of schools, half day, June sixteenth, right? And then everyone pretty much checks out, I'm not a parent, I know there's some parents in the crowd, so everyone pretty much sets sail after that, I guess, okay? Yeah, it's, because then you're picking Fourth of July, you got summer graduation, yeah.
I also talked to Mark this morning, he told me you would have to be thirty five days to the time, they took the time to think at it. Well, thirty five days get really close to January, so if we don't have a fight in January, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to talk about it.
Joan?
Um, I I guess my main concern is that, you know, Dustville is gonna be left with, you know, nothing but, uh, chomping. Our free cash at the Burn Night. I just, the, I I heard you mention the, uh, the safety projects that were important as far as safety was concerned. I didn't hear anything, I didn't hear any of the, uh, of the, uh, sports stadium, uh, projects mentioned in there. And I know you guys got, you know, a bunch of money from C P A to redo the, you know, the high school stadium, and that's great. But I don't understand why suddenly we have to redo everything else that goes along with it. Okay, I know it'd be nice to be able to start brand new, but, uh, you know, when, uh, when there's, uh, you know, a money problem here, clearly, uh, I don't, I don't understand why that has to be included in, uh, in this budget.
Well, several of them, like the press box, which is a deal, you know, it is, is rotted up, so it it's a safety issue, it cannot use. The, um, goalposts are bent and are unsafe to use at this time. I believe that those are the only two items from the, the, um, athletic fields that Sheri mentions and wants to be. I thought that was quite good, how much, how much, uh, what portion of the, uh, of the budget was, uh, is for athletic?
So, yeah, there's, there's things like, like Dr. Jesse mentioned, the press box, goal, goalposts, and then high school netting for fencing, for soccer, baseball, lacrosse, it's a force system. Need benches and bleachers for both the middle school and high school. Yeah, absolutely. And including answering Joan's question, athletic storage sheds and batting cages for baseball fields, so just to reiterate what they were. Carol?
I was just going to suggest that they consider, while the elected officials can't, they score the question they did easily, and it's very common that schools have formed valid question committees. Um, and they file that, you know, which put each town apart, and then they can do the, that they want, as long as they, they can do for events, you know, whatever. Um, and then the schools have customarily formed out of question committees over the last twenty two years that are pretty common. The other thing about the thirty five days is that's, it's very, your ballot question can be placed without, um, so I can have thirty five days to give it to the board. So you can't call an election, you have thirty five days later to have to file your ballot question, and then the form starts. And keep in mind that it might take a week to get the ballots printed, and then you have absentee fees, which you would in the summer. Um, it's the logistics of people getting their ballots, it's not very, you know, gross.
Yeah. Have we done this before, Carol?
Many times. We had, um, we've had junior, U I elections often, um, we'll never forget in November of twenty twenty.
We won't forget that.
Um, the, the schools have always come through with ballot question committee, like, where they go to towns and try to play a part. And they just have to keep careful records of, uh, money spent and money saved, just lightly and keenly toward them. And, um, they can give any information that they want, unlike elected officials that you can't speak for or guarantee, if you want to educate people. And honestly, if the school committee, if does it, then people would just look at it like, well, they want it to pass because it's a school committee. And so the ballot question fees, if they're on a paper, they're legal doing that, and that's the only time I see those questions applied here without, you know, which is a problem.
What's it cost us to run a special election?
On, probably about twenty five hundred dollars, give or take, depends on the mailing of the ballot.
I'm just gonna throw this out there, if I can, um, maybe, have room to say, but for some of the athletic stuff, um, is, isn't there a fairly strong booster group or athletic that, do they have any available, available funds to maybe fund some of this? They have.
And regarding, uh, um, question committee, um, we have already been told by our chairman that we, because it's debt exclusion, just the department can't do anything.
No, you can't, parents can't.
No, yeah, I'm asking about the parents, yeah, yeah.
No, I just want to make sure. No, 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 no choice, and no elected official can be pressured. Um, so I I mean, I think that the, the, which obviously they're very generous, but I know that they are allocating whatever funds they have.
So, come full circle. We have to make technically a decision whether we want to push that, just put back out to a ballot or someone else come up with some other creative plan. My only thought was the ARPA money that was supposed to be for the following year, but it's not really sufficient either to.
But they've already accounted for the ARPA money for something, it's already been allocated.
Yes, we still haven't received that. But it's also, it's already spent, yes.
Yes.
The full two seventy?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I was gonna say. It'd be creative accounting, right?
No, they, they've already, they've already earmarked it for something. I mean, if we were to, I mean, what are our options, short of not doing this? If we were to try to fund this, the remaining one twenty four.
You don't have it.
And, you know, what do we have, our stabilization fund?
We can use, uh, stabilization as part of it, uh, we have, but aren't that enough to be, uh, access levels capacity? So we could raise and appropriate the balance of that, it's still need to come.
You can go back to me.
Yeah. Stabilization, that.
Stabilization, or I believe it's about, we have three, thirty five.
Which is well below what D O R would like you to have.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Great stabilization.
It's not enough, it's below the D O R recommended levels.
Way more.
Oh, yeah, two hundred and fifty five percent of the year.
Yeah.
We haven't put money in stabilization in years.
So our only option really is to.
Send it back out.
Put a ballot back.
Though to Carol's knowledge and expertise, if we may not have the time to get there for some of the summer projects they would like to have in place as they try to.
So, right, next question is, what is the amount we'd ask for, one twenty four?
One question, yeah. We chose not to do that for lots.
We did do that, and then we had a reason, yeah.
Brian was here that evening. It's not even like you're keeping the goal in the budget.
Right.
Put the question at one eighty eight, so.
Because the thought is something could come up with the one thirteen, whatever gets unearthed on the roadway, they have not, we have no flex.
Nothing, yeah.
You know, so having that sixty, sixty thousand dollars of change.
What are you saying, you want to go the debt exclusion with that number?
I'm done, I'm just, I'm asking a question.
We already had six, okay, and.
Yeah, but we're gonna let that fall off to free cash.
That was just a teaser.
We weren't collecting whether or not hope can affect, we actually made it something that we thought that there was sufficient support, which there was at town meeting, but not at the ballot.
Yeah. I'm still going back to the one eighty eight, debt excluded.
That's fine, I've been just asking.
That, now you have it, eighteen thousand dollars in free cash, I don't think we've ever had that. Talk about getting it picked clean.
Yeah.
Some reason why we just can't, uh, just say, no, we're gonna do, you know, sixty thousand or whatever, and just, uh, you know, get over it.
I think the ripple effect to that would be too significant for being part of a regional school district, with our impact on. With our impact on the Rockins, we're twenty percent compared to their eighty percent of the budget.
Some projects, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be on the bill.
Well, a lot of them wouldn't get.
You know, all these projects are not, you know, approved.
Well, a lot of these projects are where they are because they have been ignored for years. There is a point where time catches up to you. These projects catch up to you.
So we could.
Keep in mind, these are the students that are using the athletic facilities as well as Rockins. It's not like Rockin versus Duncible. Student Duncible, like me, the repairs done to athletic facilities as well as all the other safety facilities updates there are. And it's all.
I guess I could, we could make a motion to see if we want to revote this. I mean, what do you guys think?
I'm fine with that, I moved that forward. I don't, I mean, at some point here, she's telling us that it's twenty five hundred dollars to run the election, so that's gotta.
Oh, that takes, takes the eighteen down to fifteen five.
Yeah.
So the, the real issue, we can revote this on a timeline that's consistent with proposition two and a half guidelines, right? I'm not, I'm talking, you have Ron to guide us to that in terms of those dates.
Right, they're specified in.
Whatever that is, and you're gonna have to figure out who's gonna be the interim town clerk. And this, because there's gonna be a clerk to run the election, you don't need a clerk to run the election. So it's either gonna be her as an interim base sister, you're gonna find that's also, we know that, but.
That's the next discussion, yeah.
We're not going out already, yeah.
I think that if that's what we want to do, then I'll move that. Go forward with the revote of that debt exclusion for Rockin, Duncible's capital project. That, that would be my motion, that we move this forward in an expedited fashion.
I'll second it for sake of further discussion.
Questions?
So this is, this is, you're, you're talking about revoting the one hundred and eighty eight thousand dollar.
Yes, that's what we're talking about, yeah.
Because I was gonna ask, what are our options when, when we only have sixteen thousand dollars in the bank and something happens and we need money? Do we, can we call Rockin and see if we get a loan?
You, well, we can, you would have. What we would, what we would end up doing is, is, is going into stabilization.
What's that?
We would end up going into stabilization account.
That's your savings.
That's your savings.
And how much is in the stabilization account?
Three thirty five.
Three hundred and thirty five thousand?
No, no, no.
Three hundred and thirty five thousand.
What, um, I'm sorry.
Three hundred and thirty five thousand.
That's three hundred and thirty five dollars.
No, a few more zeros on there.
So I'm just to be quick, that was my question, Ron, your question is to do the exact same. Done, so what was written the first time? And then I also just want to comment, all these, all these numbers based also on regional, with Rockin, Duncible. And what we don't want to have happen, Joan, is Duncible being a violation of that. So those are the reasons, it's even as different from both.
I understand that, but it's my understanding that if, if, you know, if Duncible can't afford to, you know, to pay for everything that, on the wish list, then, you know, it just gets broken down into, like, into the, as per the, the regional agreement. Then Rockin doesn't, then Rockin doesn't pay as much, right? Isn't that how it works?
We just, yeah, it's, it would become complicated math.
Ultimately, the school committee votes on the election, and so we decide what we assess to the towns. And if you don't fund that election, it, it's essentially a projection of our question. We can either come back and look at our question and decide to come up with a number, or we decide to leave it as is. And in that case, kind of bring it to the final decision, for trying to stop that super town. Where, but it must come together, one single town gave a vote on that. And the result of that is, that's my own result. And if it, if you guys haven't funded that.
It can come out and.
And you have to now scrape together that money somehow.
So I also just wanted to figure out if we generally vote and have a line here that actually would have put, normally have that, but the Duncible, that deserves a bit of free cash. So in a way, it kind of benefits the town and the school, like we got, we also need some money. So it does help with the.
Well, I'm much more in favor of voting the whole amount again, as opposed to voting the lesser amount and the less.
Right.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Ron proposed, was the full one eighty eight, two seventy four. No, approximate, whatever.
Yeah.
What I have with that.
My, my opinion is the original one year.
Yeah, right, to one year exclusion, right.
So you have this one year increase.
Right, right, the one time capital.
And you have about a thousand Duncibles in Brown, I don't think that's four.
Approximately, yeah.
Well, all twelve, yeah.
Right, a hundred and forty eight, and I talked to the town clerk.
One forty eight per house, yeah.
Yeah.
For, for one year, one hit, and one forty eight.
Oh, fair, it's, this is your, this is particular values from your towns and style. But I guess, we started this conversation, if you guys took no actions, you would appropriate the sixty four thousand dollars for our capital. And then here we started the conversation, we thought that was going to be even, so that was what was allocated, and so that was the cash in certain order. And now you're, you are okay with that, which was potentially okay with free cash. Like nothing happened, it's just, it's about the cash. And now you're talking about, I want to vote on the eight out there, because we're concerned about the free cash. I don't know why you would put one forty four up there, if you were comfortable with free cash as a shape, it's not an option. I'm confused about that, I think the voters might be confused about your asking, but when you only need one twenty four, you need capital obligations for the free cash position.
Because of the, go ahead.
Sure, because the decision was made at the board that that sixty four thousand wasn't there. It, you know, if you just heard the free cash number, it's at eighteen thousand, right? So we, that sixty four thousand is gonna fall back into free cash, which is gonna make our free cash eighty thousand dollars. And that, you know, it just, you just can't spend, I mean, you can't let your free cash go to zero. Eighteen thousand is, on a twelve million dollar budget is really bad. And, you know, the state's been in there a couple of times and cautioned us about doing this. And they've written to us a couple of times saying, you guys get to get your hand out of that free cash account. And we've, we've never been able to move away from it. In fact, this is the worst it's ever, ever, ever been. And so the, the, you know, I understand your point with going after the one twenty four, but the reality is you need one eighty eight. And the sixty thousand dollars isn't gonna buy you very much. And this, this board and the finance committee jointly made that decision to not pick free cash that clean. And I don't want to cause confusion. Yeah, I mean, I don't want to cause confusion about it. We're not, we, you know, we, the district needs a hundred and eighty eight K, and that's what we want to support is the one eighty eight K. We don't have the sixty four thousand dollars in free cash, we really, we really don't. It's, it was just, it was a decision that was made more by the heart rather than it was by the fact that that free cash number can't go that low, it just can't. I don't, I don't know what Rockin's free cash, the town of Rockin's free cash is, but I'll, I'll bet it's not, you know, twenty five or thirty grand.
Sounds like you did that, the free cash basis, so you made sure that the legal obligations.
Exactly, it was a strategic.
It was just the money position route, it's just wanted to make sure, kind of regard this as the way that the voter.
Or as I think, like Sheri or whoever was at the meeting, it's like, we have to pay these contractual obligations. Because we asked the question that night, like, what happens if it doesn't pass? We were five votes away. Right, it's five, five people, that's not a lot. But there's a motion now.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let us know how to handle it, Dave.
We called to revote ballot question. We didn't just call an election, we called to revote the ballot question.
In the most expeditious way possible.
So we're gonna submit the question to the clerk, clerk that serves.
Right.
We need to get a clerk, let's move on to our next item.
We don't have the money to pay for until July first.
One of the things that we.
That could be stabilization.
No, we're gonna do it.
Okay.
That's.
It is a.
We'll figure that out.
To answer what Duncible is, we're gonna have a cake sale, but. Generous a lot, to answer your question, I think, you, you can understand from the discussion prepared, it hasn't been against your thinking. And so we had some details here to work out, and, and we'll get those issues solved, and we'll figure out how to pay the clerk, and it all will come together quickly as we can without the cake sale.
It's been a difficult year, in case you haven't noticed over here.
This is how we conduct, save it for lunch.
Excellent.
Thank you all.
Next thing on the.
A question, is there, I, I looked on the, the school website, I'm looking for the history of the, of the capital plan from back from when, you know, when it started, up to now, is that somewhere?
Did you want to share your? Yes, you could, one last thing, and you're gonna have to check, yes, if, depending on the timing of the election that you do, you may have to issue a new assessment letter.
Yeah.
So that we have, we have a.
Yeah, and we would too. Who's taking over for Fred?
Um, we have only, uh, Amy.
Amy. You can send that to us a little over.
So we can get it, you'll know when.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I know Fred quite well, but. Yeah.
Next, next thing on our review business is appointment of consultant or intern town clerk.
Um, we just, we wanted to follow up about the ARPA money, actually, to figure out, like, in, also in this package that Sheri put together, there's sort of a timeline of, and I know this is. There's some sliding there that tells you exactly what the Duncible problem is, it's very, very, very large.
Yes. Okay.
It's a team chair.
What's a team chair, someone who offers a special education, to make sure that, that special education is in this state, keep Jeff around, it's why we get sort of safety, it's brought in, it's, it was, we're so far behind, you know, special education services.
True, what happens when the ARPA money runs out?
It's issued.
Over the product by then.
We actually, they got out, yeah, we have it at a hundred percent this year.
Okay.
And then it bases out over, so we're giving it, you're giving this in two years, but we're.
Okay.
This, originally we had a stipend, um, twenty four acres, we sacked.
Yeah.
Then the next town went to the towns and not.
Okay.
Yeah, and, so I've said, Sheri, like, get posted and ended this year, and twenty thousand.
I think we could check with Bonnie, right?
Yeah.
Dave should be able to get us up the speed on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, appointment of consultant or intern town clerk. Part two.
Carol, do you want to participate in this conversation?
You having a hard time with Wordle today? Yeah. That's, that's a problem.
Um, I, I'm here to answer your questions.
All right, as I mentioned previously, Carol and I have talked about her staying on, on a internship or temporary capacity. To help us get through the capacity, get a full time, get a new contract on board. She has agreed to do that, she has asked for an increase in her salary from thirty nine to forty five dollars. There is a, a week that's missing out of her salary from the previous, just three, or this just three year. As part of her budget, we talked a little bit about how we're gonna fund the, the missing week. The idea was we were gonna structure it in such a way that you could work here as well as at home, when Keith's work at home. And at this one, I recommend that the board take her offer up as a consideration in that we move forward, at least having somebody in place so that we can get through to the point of where we are able to get a new town clerk on board. The other thing is, on July first, I added in twenty thousand dollars for consulting fee and at the, under the assumption that if we didn't have a contract on board at that point, we could, once again, continue to keep a stay with Carol or hire a contractor vendor to, to take care of that responsibility. Carol and I did have a discussion today about having Kate be appointed by the town clerk, so the town clerk, assistant town clerk, to do some of the basic functions such as specifically referenced, I don't.
Yeah, I don't, you know, when, and now just to delegate a little more of, I have to check to see if I can delegate, or I can delegate, I'm delegating all the news. I, I, I don't have a problem appointing some assistant town clerk, but my concern is that an assistant town clerk under law is a standard and responsible assistant town clerk. And without the training, and without the classes, and just can't, they can't function in, in the entirety, it's just a couple of things that I need. Which is okay, I'm leaving that we have to be able to the new town clerk to decide. Also, we might just need him paid, because I don't want to add to his workload and responsibilities, and I think that's fair. And I've never been qualified for that, so that's unharbored, leave, changing the rule about that. He's graciously honored to take on many responsibilities, but I don't think that that is fair to him to be doing that without being paid when a new town clerk comes on board. But that's.
The position is currently open, we don't have one applicant. The demand, the supply and the demand.
I'm not sure who to ask my questions to, but how many hours per week were you looking to do on a part-time consultant basis, I guess?
What I have to do is take the remaining money that we have, and Susan spends it on birthdays, and then divide it by forty five. And then I'll know what I, what I can work.
And we'll, we'll have to have some control over that, because we, obviously, we only have how much money we got. So, you know, if, if you say, just the intent is to be twenty hours, we take additional salary. And that, that's not going to work, it's gonna have to, we're gonna have to monitor.
No, I, I.
Less time.
I know I can't work with what's left, so I can't necessarily, I respect me, because, I, it's about, we figured out today, is the temporary town clerk about fifteen hundred dollars in extra?
Yes.
So we figured about five, six thousand dollars, and then that's it, I have to stop working until July first.
So July, then we have.
Then you used the twenty K.
So like two on a week, if I, it could be ten one weekend, I, I don't know, I, I'm here to get the job done. The, this is slightly right before July fifteenth, when the secretary of common. The, this is slightly right before July fifteen, when the secretary of common will mail all registered voters an application. And then it'll, that's one I really recommend that signing has to be on board by July fifteen to do that. You know, like, I can stay here on the week or two. Training, having the experience for a benefit. If they do not have the experience of the fall of twenty twenty, their strength becomes zero. So that's not hard to get into speaking. It's not all of them.
Sure.
This person will have to find a team of people who can get the balance in, the balance out. I mean, people are good here. This person won't know anybody.
Yeah.
We need new election workers. We're down to two. She's been, she and you have to pull for, you know. They're gonna need a lot of help and we hope getting on the ground.
Hit the ball a little.
Well, every town does, every town doesn't, we all have the same responsibilities. Every town does a little bit different. It could take her, okay, I'm actually saying I have a break.
That's whatever.
It's a few days to find where, where, where the subdivision plans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Things like that. Don't know. Board registrations and things like that.
The advantage would be getting somebody in with an ad so that we're working town clerk. So either as an assistant clerk or, or the worst-case scenario, somebody has just assisted a town clerk.
Where are we advertising right now?
Uh, we put it in the MMA and the Town Clerk Association. We discussed putting it in the Brock newspaper, but we didn't think that that would have enough to draw on it.
It doesn't. It doesn't. I don't know what the imprint is, but it's not very much.
In the minute you go to one of the live papers, you're gonna pay twelve, fifteen hundred dollars for the ad, so.
What about?
Actually, what happens with Indeed is kind of an interesting situation because Indeed doesn't, Indeed, if you want to put a job ad on Indeed, you can do that. They try to, I think it's like two hundred and sixty-five bucks. It's sort of similar to school spring and things like that. What happens is there are aggregates out there and Indeed is an aggregate too. So they're looking at every newspaper that has an ad. So if you place an ad in Brock paper, I don't know if it would, if it would ran away down to that level, but usually any of the live papers, it automatically gets put in Indeed. It's not, there's not a, a need to do that. But they, they have boxes scan all the ads and within a week, they'll, they'll see we haven't had that one. I'm surprised. I, I can actually check tomorrow and see if it's already on. Something wouldn't be though, because they don't do the associations, which is a good point.
But you're looking for experienced candidates. And if you're looking for someone who's either already in the town clerk or is an assistant town clerk, the place they're gonna look is at me. They are gonna go to the.
All the professionals in the municipal field would go to M M A.
Yes, exactly. Or they're gonna go to the association, but probably at me.
I did mention that when I leave here, I'm, the, we're going multiple works. So I don't mind putting down the multiple ones you pay my wages and mileage because that's, that's much easier down there anymore.
I don't know if we can pay wages commuting. Can we? Driving from home to.
It's not a, where you test an expense.
I think you could pay the fuel surcharge, but I don't think you could pay the mileage and don't pay the time. It's typically.
Yeah, I don't think, you're not asking to get paid to drive that. You're asking to get mileage.
Mileage that the IRS might.
Yeah, based on the federal.
But I'm here until September sixteen, little working holes and holes.
But, but, but in terms of the, those kind of things, that there, if we have Jake to do some of that, we're in contact. You know, in, in defining what needs to be done, who's gonna do it, and whether you have to come down or not come down.
Things more, it's not going to be all the after July.
Probably ten hours a week. This ballpark.
Are you honest?
Ten hours a week, that's four hundred and fifty dollars a week for five weeks until we get to June twenty-ninth is forty-five hundred dollars, right?
We have that. We, we just have that.
Yeah. Plus compensating Jake for his additional.
There's, there's an additional line in the budget, the clerk's line that we could use until July.
Okay. Right. I, I, I think we have to look at July fifteen as Carol's gone after that. When the moving began, I have to go with it.
You gotta move. You could be a squatter though.
The future takes four years. I'll go first or second, you can ask. But I just don't want to cuddle back close here. I don't want to be able to train for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I can respect that. But my thought is just how do we get to July one budget-wise and wrap my head around that? Yeah.
Well, it's, it's lower now, so that's in your favor. I've just finished the elections. I'm, tomorrow I'm gonna start working on town meeting. And then it's just every day, then it's in March, June, Thursday, 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 things like that. And now I have nothing here.
Yeah.
Stayed in here, but people are away. People, it's, the county's not as busy. There is a, a high demand right now for birth certificates and marital services because people are going back to getting the real ID. So, and obviously, that's just a concern. Our time, but I checked that information three times a day.
Yeah. May have a special election. It could be exciting.
I mean, I have a special election. It's not a problem. It's, you name it, you do it.
Right. Yeah, that's. So we need to make a motion to pick this thing, Carol as an intern town clerk. As well as Jake as assistant intern town clerk. We gotta make a motion for this, right?
Yeah, we should make a motion just.
And these would both go until a certain time?
Um, well, just until, to June thirtieth and then we'll figure it out. Hopefully, we'll, we'll have somebody.
For both Jake and for Carol?
June thirtieth, twenty-two, and then we could always revisit it.
We could revisit it as a consultant.
Right. Exactly.
Oh, you, the clerk then appoints. Okay.
But.
She has a point, Jake.
Moderator, yep.
That's why you stand in here.
It's like that show Captain Planet. You put all your rings together. Nothing else like a marriage.
Oh, yeah, that's.
So someone can make a motion to appoint Ms. Carol Skerritt, intern town clerk till June thirtieth.
Intern, uh, town clerk. I don't know. What do you want to call her?
Choose wisely.
Captain, Captain clerk?
Captain clerk.
Doesn't come with the sash.
You're lying about that same title.
And the rate would be forty-five dollars an hour, including, as well as compensation for mileage to and from her home in Multon Borough.
Until the budget runs up.
Until June thirtieth or as budget, budget. We'll revisit the budget if you have to.
Maybe doing some pro bono.
We gotta roll that until we can.
Second. Yeah.
We can open it up for more discussion if you want. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
It's been an honor.
So you're gonna swear her in now? Okay.
Yeah, let me just make her, her appointment slip off by here. I did it for her.
I'll create a shift to the next item.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, next item is authorize the submission of bylaws atop of by, bylaws adopted at the twenty twenty-two annual town meeting in accordance with Mass General Law C forty, thirty-two Wetlands Bylaw.
I had spoken to Carol about that, that the bylaw amendment, the bylaw amendment. Are you still planning to file that?
I am. It's just the one by law.
Yeah.
Okay.
I couldn't do it if I wasn't staying.
Okay. All right.
Now we got you.
So now we don't need to do this.
No, but she's, well, as she said, she's gonna file the paperwork.
Yeah, okay.
She's back on the clock.
So then we don't need to discuss our authorization to do it if you can.
If you want, it's a precaution, but I have.
That's, that's how we would propose.
Okay.
Right.
Devoted to do it in, for some reason, it doesn't happen. You have the authority to do it.
Calling the election three days after town meeting is, is not going to be how we need to get at the election.
Yeah. Could be good on that one.
I guess so, yeah.
Update on the Pepperell industrial landfill proposal. I see we each have a Stop the Toxic Dirt wire.
Yeah.
I think someone reached out. Was it, I don't remember who from Pepperell reached out and ordered. Was asking for our support to help mitigate this dirt dump over there at one sixty-one National Road.
So do you know anything more about this, Jake? Have they talked to you?
Um, Wilson, we just had the email. So they're requesting that we consider writing D E P, D E P to oppose the project. They were also wondering if we would be willing to have you sign a letter to your counterparts and pepper urging them to keep on fighting it and funding your special legal counsel. I don't want to go that far, but certainly expressing the interest of the town against the project. I know as Michael Publicist of our world, there's a lot of concerns about this project and the weight load of the trucks that would pass over Main Street and Pleasant Street. And you have talked about it in the past, which is why I brought this back, because I know it was a concern.
Well, I'm still opposed to it, so I, I don't want them driving through town. I, we've got this project going on. I don't know where they are with the D E P at this point. I can ask a couple of people I know that are in Pepperell that are heavily involved, just to see what the status of, this, this doesn't say what the status is. This is all sort of the same info that we had before.
But this, there's a couple of things about this, right? We, this has been around a lot. And as a board, I think we offered to support this once before.
To support opposing it. Yeah.
Yeah. And so here we are, this month, maybe two years later, three years later. I looked at the statistic here of ten trucks an hour. That's eighty trucks in a day.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't believe that's even possible.
It's true. This, this is the info that they were, that their people were telling us years ago.
And so we had a discussion here and, and maybe we need to revisit this in a greater detail, how this has come back. All right. We had a discussion. Paul Belida was at the discussion, all right, about what we could control, what we could not control to try to regulate this a little bit. We talked about posting some stop signs to make it.
At all the intersections.
Well, that was what we did. And we said we had the leader and I think, you know, maybe while he was on the board at the time, we talked about doing that and we just kind of did do it. And maybe we need to revisit that. Cause I, but I, I personally have a hard time thinking it's gonna be eighty truckloads a day coming to the town. I just, I can't, I, I, I can't imagine it, but maybe I guess that could be. And the other thing is, that's great, but is this an exercise in futility and this guy's gonna win anyway? Cause there's nothing on here that says that he's got some issue. He's done, it's just a legal course and maybe it'll take another year, but it looks as though they're gonna be dumping that dirt.
I don't, I don't, that's not saying it to me. I don't know if that's been the decision yet.
Well, they tell them they're gonna hire an L S P, so there's obviously some discussion about it.
It's been stalled in legal nightmare for years now.
But this guy's got, he's gonna make a hundred million dollars on this thing. If he wants to spend five or six mil on legal fees, that's dust.
Cost of doing business.
Yeah, it's just an investment.
Yeah.
He doesn't get it.
I mean, we do support it. We don't want to be put in that position. But I also think in parallel with this, if this thing is starting to get closer to reality, we need to rethink this stop sign issue that we.
We do. And we talked with you guys, the chief and Dave. And, and you might, whatever you are, Mike, sorry.
Jim and Mike.
About doing this. Who are you guys anyway?
Wheels are off.
My brain shut off.
I guess so.
Passed the.
Here we are. Um, so essentially, I agree. We, I think we continue supporting it. And then once it, I hesitate to say we're gonna commit legal funding resources to anything because we are in a budget crunch.
Yeah.
Let's just be reasonable.
Yeah.
You know, and I think farther down the road, if we learn that there are eighty truckloads going through town, then we connect with Chief Dow and, and Mike and the roads group to say, how else can we remedy, is there any way to deter them coming through one thirteen strategically?
I mean, this eighty truckload, these are eighty, eighteen wheels.
That's a lot of trucks.
See them saying that they, they.
I think they can do it. I think they could do it. I think if they wanted to, they could push, make that a hundred trucks a day. It depends on how much movement.
Yeah, but.
When the time they were dead, the, the big spear was, it was coming out, it was coming out of Logan. And you, I don't know if it's still coming out of Logan, but if it is, you know it's contaminated. Don't tell me. It's like Chelsea, I'm like Chelsea.
Yeah, it is what it is.
In the middle of nowhere and nobody caught on until, you know, till someone did. Say, hey, what's all that stuff doing there?
Yeah.
Robert Bridges posted for, uh, Calvert posted for.
Well, I said, definitely, that's, I was thinking that. You could probably get that little cover post.
The way we're not gonna be driving over.
Cause there's, cause they're gonna, they're gonna be coming in heavy. You know, they're, they're gonna be bouncing too.
Air braking by the school as they go around the little triangle. That'd be great.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's probably faster than so.
I was thinking, because you go straight, I suppose, to go on the left, but then how do you get back up to?
They're gonna go through one eleven. The other option was them to go up and take exit two off of Route three.
And back down. Yeah.
And there I'm starting to see signs out there to stop the dirt. So.
Gathering steam again.
Yeah.
Well, let's.
I'll reach out to my people and report back. One eleven.
Yeah.
And it's right to the spot.
Pass all those new homes they just put right there.
It is, yeah.
Get pizza Zacharias on the way by.
They get more money, so probably they could fight it, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, every truck's got one hundred thousand pounds. What's that?
Yeah.
That's where you stop from.
It's a weight limit on the bridge over Shenanigans.
Yes.
What is it?
I don't know, to be honest with you, but there is. But I'm sure it could be.
Is that a state goal?
Yeah.
State room?
Yeah, state.
Yeah, the time to check you over. Well, we'll continue to support them and learn more as the days roll by.
Should we do?
Yeah.
Maybe we find the old letter and just read.
Change the date.
Yeah. Today we continue to support this. Like, this was our first take and we stand by it. I'll shift to discussion on state earmark.
As you are aware, it's contacted by the Senate Kennedy's office. Uh, there was some interest in having, that's to get some sort of earmark. Uh, as part of the original budget, however, James Oscus, who's legislated the Senate Kennedy's office, said it was too late. They'd asked us on Wednesday or Tuesday, Thursday, I said, and we didn't have a meeting in between.
Yeah.
So we didn't even have a chance to discuss it. And I said, oh, Jesus, it's kind of disappointing. He said that it's not gonna put a halt to it. He said that there's gonna be a supplemental budget that's gonna be submitted in June and that they could still add it to that. He, he's looking for ideas for projects too, which I'd suggested was the media school and the deletting.
Yep.
The other one that's come up just recently was the town ban stand.
Yeah.
Money, some money for that. So the, and I'd have to see how those projects would fit in terms of what they're looking for for earmarks.
Okay.
So it's, you know, sometimes look at, you know, specific things like, we want projects that are, that are energy efficiency. We want projects that are gonna promote economic development. We want projects that I would think the angle here would be, you know, it's a town center. It's heavily used. There's a lot of citizen activity in the area.
Yeah.
And beautifying the downtown area.
Communal gatherings at the ban stand.
Yeah. Yeah.
Outside.
So, you know, I can do, I could see about, you know, if we're looking forty and forty, I don't know if forty's enough to do the painting. I don't have even a rough idea of how much that is.
Okay.
But the town dance stand, I would think what's been discussed in the emails, forty thousand dollars should be rolling.
Yeah.
That would be great. Forty wouldn't make a dent in the deletting, the painting.
What's wrong with the town dance?
Everything.
What is it?
It's falling apart.
It's falling apart.
Carpet bees.
Yeah, the bees are possessed. The bees have possessed.
The big ones.
And I'm working on getting someone out here and fix that temporarily so someone can fix it.
It's a little wiggly, rotten.
Who built that thing? Yeah.
Ray Sullivan, I think, right?
Both school buildings.
Yeah.
Maybe we can get them back over here and, or re-yeah.
You use CPC money for that, right? Restoration, CPC money for restoration project?
It's not historic, though.
Doesn't have to be historic. It could be a restoration project.
Probably historic.
If it's, it's not.
How about the, the school? That's a story.
Well, now we're going through CPC. That's, there's an application in CPC for that, which we've been working on this. We have a number for like eight hundred thousand dollars for that.
Yeah. But we use CPC money for the dugouts down at the park.
That was recreational.
Yeah, the bands aren't recreational and dancing. Grabbing our straws here.
Pass the chairs. You see, she might be able to.
Yeah, my head is all Stewart on that. I'm tired of all Stewart.
Your boyfriend Stewart. My God, you talk to him all the time.
Yeah.
Got him on speed dial.
The high end on the earmarks is around a hundred thousand dollars, but they're very few and far between. It's more somewhere in the mid range.
So we stand a good chance.
I think for the bandstand would be.
There's no guarantee.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Let's find out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make something, I'll, I'll talk to them for the answer.
Okay.
Vote on formation of team for negotiating with the police unit. Chief Dow and.
And Chair of Board.
Myself, I guess. Uh-oh.
You get all this good stuff now.
Geez, you wanna deal with me? No, you don't have to deal with me. I guess they do.
Yeah, they do. I've done it for three years. I'm good.
What the process there would be is I thought Chief Dow and Karen both, what in the contract presently works, what doesn't work.
Okay.
Use that as a starting point for developing our initial proposal to the union. You know, usually you have the ground rules to discuss what, you know, can happen, that neither of us can go to the press or something, you know, doing this film, making those kind of things. Once the ground rules were established, and we both made.
Oh, I am, yeah.
Yeah.
You said you'd, you'd just. On the boat. Or not.
I have a question that I forgot it was. That probably wasn't important. Well, let me know, I guess, how soon, when you want to.
I told them we weren't gonna start till sometime this morning.
Okay.
They, you know, the, the expectation was that we, the union was all like, realistically, that's not gonna happen.
Okay, time's running short. And then do you get information, like, the average increases other CBAs are seeing within the county, the state of Massachusetts, or baselines?
And then any of the proposals we, the chief said would, uh, uh, build them out in terms of what the impact would be if it had a particular. And the same thing, town council would do the same thing. I would tell them specifically what their proposal was and what the net impact would be.
Okay.
And all that, and everything else is, you know, stuff we have to work on.
And the contract doesn't expire on June 30th with?
It doesn't. It continues until we negotiate a successful contract.
Okay, and then retroactive back however many days between July 1 and.
Once again, it's a fall town meeting thing.
Yeah.
In terms of, if there's races or the public monitor, and so we end up just.
Cool. They're happy to get started whenever, so.
Wanting to make a motion? Did we do that, or?
No. So our bargaining committee will be Karen, David, and the police chief.
Do you want to be on it or just want to be advisor?
He sits in as between, yeah.
So you're a non-voting member?
Yes.
Okay.
Because he's not a union either.
Figure it out.
Figure it out. That's my motion, that, that the chief be an advisor to the bargaining committee, and that Karen and David are voting members to that.
Second.
I don't, I don't think we want to call it a committee, because I don't know.
What do we call it?
Team.
Team. Two.
You don't want to have to.
Team.
Team.
Formulation of voting team for negotiating with the police unit shall be David and Karen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I just go back, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
This, this, because this is gonna drive me crazy, this toxic dirt thing, all right? Can we, can we do this? Because something's telling me this thing is imminent to happen, all right? We had these, oh, by the way, discussions. Do you think that, that you two guys could get together, all right, and take a look at what we can propose for placement of stop signs? Okay, as well as for the load ratings on the new Culver and the Salmon Brook Bridge? And then whether or not there's a load rating on Shawpon or with the dam over Shawpon over Shawpon, all right?
And vibration ratings on the tombs by Central Cemetery?
Which you should be able to figure out, because you still have seismic sensors there now.
On that note, Ron, what about the jam? We do have to do something to.
The woodwork?
Might help us use that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, so we had, those are, the Shawpon, Salmon Brook, the new bridge, the Culver, okay? And then I also think there's a Culver on the upper end of Main Street.
There is.
Joint grass.
Joint grass.
Joint grass.
Joint grass.
Can we get?
I know, that one's failing too.
Can we bring all this stuff into some sort of a document, report, something other than just these, oh, by the way, conversations so that?
And I'm serious about the tombs at Central Cemetery.
I am serious with you.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm waiting to see, they, they get vibration months.
Meters out there, yeah.
And I'm curious when, I, I'd like to know when a tanker, when a tanker goes by loaded.
Yeah, exactly.
Does to shake. These guys are gonna be in the tank.
Yes, we loaded.
So if we can just get, like, in the next couple of weeks or so, for you and Jimmy to get together and say, look, map this out. These are our issues. This is what we think the load ratings are. And here's where we think we should have stop signs to try to help us control the speed of these guys to Central Town, because if, if we don't have some sort of a cohesive plan, and this thing starts, this, this, I mean, this thing looks to me like it's, it's gonna happen soon, based on all this. I don't know. I.
We want to deter.
We want to, we want to have a plan in place to deter this, so that it's implemented with sufficient time to cause these guys to.
Go up to Nashville.
Go up to Nashville.
But, but also not cut back through Duncival all the way back to Hookon to Route 3.
So stop sign's gonna go both directions.
They do. Well, I mean, there was a bad accident out on Main Street. Was it last week, the week before? Last, with the school bus? That was not a good scene. That's somebody who was going, wasn't paying attention, going too fast on Main Street.
Yeah.
And I saw the pictures of that. That was a wild scene. We knew the Stevens House right there.
That's right.
That wasn't good.
So if you guys can, if you guys can get together, he can, either you or Jimmy write a report to the board, say, look, this is what we've done. Here's what we think makes sense, because the leader was around then. He knew the weights on the trucks, and he said, look, guys, this is the best way to approach it. We, let's cope, let's get it to a cohesive document of some sort. Jim, all right?
I want to shift to approval of amendments to liquor license legislation.
That's the actual language. I've been talking to James Ossos in Senator Kennedy's office.
Yeah.
Relative to where the actual liquor licenses, it's moved from the House of Representatives, it was approved, and it's now in the Senate. Senate's counsel, the gentleman Charlie A. Burn, raised a question as to whether the intent of the board, or the town should say, was to allow breweries and wineries. And that's what's been holding it up. They, we need to adopt the language that is there, so that we define, and it's out of context.
It is, yes. Pursuant to what?
So it's hard to piece together what the intent is, but the intent, I've been reassured that the intent is to allow breweries and wineries. And I have expressed that to the Senator's office, so they need a vote from us saying, this is the intent we approved. The, the change, the, the Senator can make a change on the floor to amend the legislative.
And we don't have the language of.
I, I don't have the language.
So is it a que, so is it a question that we would be in favor of a brewery, duncivalbrewing.com, or duncival brewing, whatever, or whatever in town?
From, from some of the emails I've seen, Brian indicated that, that, that the intent was.
I, I believe it was, but I'm asking again.
Have breweries and wines allowed, and that language was allowed.
Will, will allow.
Legislation to be amended to, to reflect that.
When we, and where's Brian Fogg with that? He crafted that for us. We didn't, we didn't do that out of order.
Do you have access to the town reports going back to when this was and what the language was? We.
I could try, but I don't think it's very equipped.
Okay.
I might have to get back to tomorrow and come down the year.
You want, we need to run it.
I know, it's a big ask to say, hey, look at this out of context, but that was the language that was forwarded to me from Kennedy. That was forwarded from General Counsel in the Senate.
What?
Assistant Counsel in the Senate.
Is that Chase James Eldridge?
Nope, that's Charlie, Charlie Hearn, Assistant Counsel Office of the State Council. Because he raised a question, because the way the legislation had been proposed were written, it didn't specify that.
If we, if we make this change, is this gonna go back for like the 35th reading or something?
Actually, he indicated to me, if you vote to make this change, then they can make it happen.
That's a nice dangle right there. It's a great little carrot. Just, just do it. Mr. Kennedy moves to amend the bill by striking out in lines three and four, the words in quotations, "to be drunk on the premises pursuant to section 12 of said chapter 138, and for off-premise premises consumption pursuant to section 15" of, end quotations, and inserting in place of thereof, the following words, "pursuant to." Super helpful.
Because the town center district, you know, specifies, the language in the town center district by law specifies something about premises, you know, being able to, I think it's, I think it's maybe, what are they called, when you make, you make beer?
Craft beer.
Craft.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On brewed on premises.
Yeah. The same thing would be a winery. It would be generally a winery, is some person, individual.
What year it was voted?
So they say.
Nineteen.
They plant their own grapes.
It's been a while. Just hasn't.
Well, that's, you know, the duncival.
Was it nineteen?
Right to farm, they can.
Brian Fogg for all that together.
I know.
Yeah.
This is the third time that Brian Kawaya had brought this back.
Because it's almost like, could a beekeeper who has enough honey and can make mead, have people drink it on sight? Because that's a right to farm, beekeeping is agricultural.
Based on that, we're, we're gonna get a look at license next week.
I can't guarantee you next week, but he said it would move.
That, well, that would be right to farm.
Right. So then selling your alcohol, your mead, is a byproduct.
It's not gonna be.
Only if you're growing.
It's gotta grow.
It's essentially it.
It'll be.
But with me, you don't need it. You just need the honey.
Month or two in A B C C.
It's a ferment.
And then we gotta figure out how to.
But it's a, but it's still a, you know, you're, you're a beekeeper, you know? It's still a, you know, a type of farmer, as, you know, just making beer. It's not quite the same thing.
Yeah. I, I, so I, I, I want to approve it, but I guess the context is tricky.
That's, that's my problem, probably, too. Me, too, that we had that, but I just suppose.
I also don't want to lose momentum, because it feels like we haven't stared at us for a moment, you know, them.
He indicated, once again, he indicated that once that language change is made, and we, it's in the emails that we're knowledgeable. We want wineries and breweries, that that, that language will.
Enable that.
Enable that.
So let's just vote it through.
Well, what you can do is vote it through. And I could forward it on to James, James, the top counsel in Senate. Make sure that that specifically, get something from them back saying, that's the intent of it.
A validation of it.
Yeah, get some, and if it, if it's not, and means something else, then we could say, we, we, subsequent meaning, we can say, we're, we're regarding that vote.
Okay.
Until we, I, I agree. I think you got momentum rolling in your favor, and they're aware of this issue, and they, they want to see it done too.
So I think I make a motion to approve the language as, right? Want me to read it again, or as stated on this piece of paper?
You can't make a motion.
That's right. You can call for a motion to say that.
For a motion.
So.
Old habits die hard.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is treasurer and collector retiring. I think we all have a copy of it.
We all have that.
Yeah.
So this says that Bonnie will be retiring as of August 2022, last day being August 15, 2022. She shares her pleasure for working for the town for the past thirty-five years, and. Do we accept her retirement?
begrudgingly.
Thank you for the questions. I think we better, probably do a little bit. Here's my, my point with this. My brain's getting washed out here. Bonnie and Carol were both constitutional officers of town. And they both gave their careers to this town, for lack of a better expression, with the years of service that they had. They gave their careers to this town. And so I think a letter is appropriate, but I think that there's gonna be some, you know, some sort of commemoration to them. Yeah, I mean, there's gotta be something that, that the board of selectmen is gonna sit, a plaque, something of some significance, and, you know, not, not, hopefully not something that we get at Walmart, Kevin Scripper at Walmart, basically. Build something like trophy placement, just get something that's really appropriate, that they're proud of, that they can hang in their house and say, this is my career. And, and, and it should be signed by all of us, and, and it should be given to them at, you know, some sort of gathering that we can have right there.
So I think you can, you can hide it until the meeting, perhaps, having a half hour before the meeting, or you have.
Yeah, we can, we can do that, too. You know, we did have, we did this once before, when there was much people here, we met with the lilac blossom.
Yeah.
I know, I didn't, I wasn't.
We went up there and had Chinese food. Ted, Ted, that was a selectman at the time, there's a few others that were around, but we all, Tony, we split the bill, and everybody could tie, and whatever happened, I don't know. That was probably all, at least. Something for them. They were not marginal employees.
No, it's not a short amount of time, and I think Ron's heart is in the right place, so let's find a way to do that.
Get, you know, some trophy place, David, or Jimmy, figure that out.
So that retirement letter is followed by the second one, which I don't have in hand, but Planning and Conservation Administrator Retirement Letter. I think it's from Miss Cheryl Mann.
Yeah, she's the thirty-first. Don't forget, she has two dates. The thirty-first is the date.
So she has said that this letter represents my official notice of retirement from the position of Administrative Assistant to the Planning Board. So she has said that this letter represents my official notice of retirement from the position of Administrative Assistant to the Planning Board and Conservation Commission with the Town of Dunstable. Official date of retirement is Friday, July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. It's been her pleasure working for the town for two decades, twenty years, and she was fortunate to work with some of the best people. And so just like Bonnie, some institutional knowledge that we had to replace, and find a way to.
Yeah, it would be a letter. Frame this for her and hand it off to her rather than, just, I mean, I think the other two need something just a little bit more different than the fact that they were constitutional officers.
The call for a motion to accept these retirement letters?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
And then the only other thing, subject of that, right?
Thank you.
This, this table was refinished by Carol Bacon's husband. And this is an exceptional job, this wasn't done by a novice. I, I think that we should at least send her or him a letter of acknowledgement expressing our appreciation for the effort.
Yeah.
This, this wasn't, have, has it been done, it just wasn't.
She did a fantastic job.
Yeah.
And it wasn't done with a roller, with a drop light in the basement of the house.
Yeah.
And I think, I'd like to, David, draft a letter to her son, her husband.
Son, definitely her son, Tom.
Leah can give you the details, we'll send that, but send that letter to them and express our profound gratitude for, for the excellence of workmanship of refinish of this table.
Basically wrote from you.
That's right.
Some key adjectives.
That table was refinished?
Yeah.
It was, yeah, like an ice skating rink.
This chair has a rude saying on it, maybe, maybe some of the chairs. Well, on that note.
Yeah.
The theater group has proposed the idea that they might be willing to donate more comfortable chairs to the grand hall.
Really?
Given how much the town has been willing to allow them to use the space and so forth. The only concern is that some of these chairs might be classed as historic, that's a little, therefore, they're historically. I hate these chairs, but I like them.
Yeah.
They are very.
Maybe that'll be a next meeting agenda item, is the chair, status of the chairs.
I suggested the theater group might want to consider bringing the chairs as part of.
Sell them off.
Yes.
Fundraising.
Well, like the guy.
That's right.
I'm sure there's.
Yeah.
People bought those chairs.
I believe it.
Yeah.
Some guys kept them in their man case.
Well, that's, yeah, let's discuss that next go around. Oh, I know it's not seven twenty-five.
Finally, special act. For liquor licenses on the town.
If the special act is what we drafted and sent to them?
This was the article.
Article in the town meeting?
To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for the enactment of special legislation that would allow for the issuance of alcoholic beverages licenses for on-premise consumption, according under Mass General Laws, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section twelve.
Doesn't say that.
To be drunk on the premises pursuant to, so they want us to remove that in the town of Dunstable. Provided that the General Court make clerical or additional changes of the form only to the bill unless the Selectmen approve amendments therefore.
So that, that was what we just did.
Yeah. So that was our article.
Specifically to be on premises.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
We wanted to.
Right.
So did you just remove that?
I don't, I think that we gave, if, if the Dunstable General Store wants us out beer, he can.
Right. So it would strike out minds, all right, so I'm, I'm reading the article, not the, what the actual special act, but strike out the words, "to be drunk on the premise premises." Okay, so the wording's a little bit different here, yeah, so the what was.
We still get the right of.
Right.
Seeing it once more.
Yeah. Back to James tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, but if it's all good, we're ready to roll, then, yes, okay.
Number five of the business. We have much?
The Mud Project technically was scheduled to be open tomorrow too, and we haven't had a lot of interest off of the website or people calling us. However, we, we potentially have the original person and another individual that's interested. One of those other individuals had requested that we extend it up to weeks.
Again?
To June eighth and open the two blocks, well, I think if we need a bid, I think that's.
Yeah.
They just don't have enough time to finish it. So what I did is I issued an addendum today to the original person that submitted it and to the other individual. Granting, while anybody up to this point, if they call tomorrow and say, I want to submit a bid, they still have to put it together, granted, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they have time either way.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a pretty big task, so that, I just wanted to let you know, hopefully that will result in a bid. And I did run that group.
Yeah.
But you extended by addendum to the two bidders, and then you extended the posting work, which posted. The same style?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
And we don't feel as though the one that has given us a bid.
I, I don't know.
We don't.
I don't.
And I'm on that group, I don't think they had a lot of communication. Okay.
In case he's planning, if he submitted it tomorrow to a clock, what we do is we just take it over to June eighth.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can't, you can't extend a bid after the big deadline.
Okay. And did that second group, so they said they're.
That, that, they indicated that we're gonna do something.
Okay, all right.
It's gonna increase the probability that we potentially will have one, if not two.
That would be good.
All right, I'm heading in tomorrow, just, I don't have a lot on it, just about any of your transfers. More of a weekly kind of thing, where we just have to go around the tables, what's happening, follow the comments.
Okay.
Get a sense on what's going on, what the issues are, we should be moving with the comments. Now, we've had a number of people that can't make that, so I don't know how well attended it's going to be.
Yeah.
Maybe me and two other people, I don't know.
Yeah.
But we'll see, Fire Chief, Screen Committee, to date, we have sixteen applicants.
Sixteen?
Sixteen, yeah. And we're meeting tomorrow to start the initial screening.
Oh, good.
This is meeting, we're gonna just start clearing it down, you know, everybody has the applications.
Yeah.
And the intent will be to narrow it down to the best application, we'll, we'll do an initial screening interview, and then we'll narrow it, it's sixteen, you go to eight, eight, whatever the number is. And by the time we, you know, finish it up, hopefully we'll have, you know, one, two, or three candidates who are absolutely qualified in our interest to be.
Sixteen?
Applicants that are currently on the.
I believe you have one.
One?
Yes.
No, those aren't public meetings, right, or are they?
It is a public meeting, yeah.
Interesting, okay.
They should have done it as a, could have done it as a.
As a non.
Face.
Yeah, as in second session, and we didn't do it that way.
No, that's fine, I just assume that it is public, because in case somebody wants to log in on Zoom, it, just listen in.
It's on Zoom. Yeah, we have people all over the place, people working, we actually have to go around for three days to find a date.
Yeah.
Negotiating treaty.
Well, that's nice.
Route one thirteen, our paperwork is in, so hopefully we'll have that.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Is there any impact for that Memorial Day parade? Memorial Day parade, the one thirteen project?
No.
Any, any issues? Yeah. Okay, just making sure, I. The parade's on Sunday. All right, just making sure. Okay.
No, everything will be closed up and secure.
Good, okay.
We, Mr. Chairman, can we go back on Gotten Dunstable?
Sure.
I just want to be painfully careful that Brian is in the loop on this assessment issue.
He is, we left a message.
And I would appreciate if you looked me into it afterwards, because I, we have, you know, I've lived through this before, twice, I understand that, okay, I, I, I understand it really well. And we're in a different world these days, and, you know, right now, we owe them a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that we don't have, based on those numbers, and I want Town Council to weigh in on that. And, and, and I want to.
In absence of the letter.
Yeah.
What actually means something.
This, this thing just looks like a problem that come on, and they'll say, well, we, we have to get a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, is, you know, where's the chat?
I, I actually, once I started hearing the conversation around the law of bells, the rest of the ball, the show, you know, upon a foot in Sweet Town, it might be another one, in terms of the, you know, the regional agreements, getting a copy of that might be helpful. So see, what, you know, that actually all means, is there, is there something in there that we can penalize for?
It, it could be, and the region agreement was rebuilt about six years ago. And there was a study that was done about having Gotten take the school district, most of those kids were gonna tuition in. All that was in, all that was in that study that, you know, I, I, I will look through my zip drives, because I think I have the study, but it kind of parallel with that, I have an easy feeling that we've got a, we've got a budget issue now that's out legally comparing it down, and I don't want to put ourselves in that position, we have been down this road before, and I want to take heed with that, and you know, my, my two colleagues here weren't here for those sessions, and there was some really painful meetings that went on at the library or at the high school.
You were on advisory.
You don't want to tuition.
Finance credit, yes.
It, with the tuition in, you're probably gonna assume, not twenty percent of the debt, you'll assume half of that.
Yeah.
It was a mess.
Twenty percent of the students in half of the debt.
It was an exercise that was done, and it, it, the regional agreement is crafted, it's pretty close to the way it's been operating, I think the district was created in the nineteen fifties. And that agreement hadn't been updated until maybe six years ago.
Yeah, well, yeah, it was during my past, the past six years, I don't remember exactly when it was, but.
So.
There should be a copy of it somewhere.
This whole issue of Supertown meeting, everything. Walked down the path. I want to be careful about reaching the premium assessment, that regional assessment, whether it was done in an email or a smoke signal, however it was, I want to be careful that we, the Dunstable on the scene.
We have some minutes from May tenth?
Welcome to accept.
Second.
May tenth, twenty-two.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jake. Other motions?
I'm good to adjourn, maybe.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.